Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, January 10th, 2012 School Board Business Meeting, our first meeting of 2012. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. Tonight, I'd like to know if there are adjustments to the agenda. I know I have one. Anyone else? I'd like to make an adjustment under Communications Legislative Update. Senator Dill will be unable to join us tonight as she was called into a legislative briefing. So she sends her apologies, and we will catch up with her later in the week to get a briefing on upcoming legislation that will affect education. Anything else? No? Okay, so let's move on to item number two, Approval of School Board Minutes. Workshop Friday, December 9th, 2011. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the workshop minutes from Friday, December 9th.
Do I have a second? Any discussion around those? All those in favor? Okay. We'll move on to item B, Regular Meeting, Tuesday, December 13th, 2011. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Yes.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes for Tuesday, December 13th, 2011 as attached to our agenda.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion or questions around this? Okay, all those in favor? All right. We will move on now to item number three, Comments by Student Representatives. Do we have any student representatives from the middle school? I see two. Please introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Eva Mealy.
And I'm Gabby Raymond.
And we're student representatives from the Capes with Middle School.
This month in the middle school, we are, in the middle school, we are focusing on substance abuse and healthy choices. We recently had a former Capes with student, Matt Braun, age 21, who battled substance abuse in his youth. It was an extremely eye-opening to many students who realize not only are drugs and alcohol a major problem, but they are a problem in our community. On this Friday, we will be having a performance by the Tardy Brothers, who are an extreme juggler pair. They will be enforcing the ideas of healthy choices. One performance will be during school for the students, and another will be $5 in the cafeteria at 7 o'clock for the community.
Tomorrow will be the Capes with Variety Show. There's one performance at 2:30 PM and another at 7:00 PM. There'll be many students doing their various talents. Mr. Price has advised we will be running the sounds, lights, and emceeing. It will cost $2 to get in.
The sign-up for swimming and indoor track starts soon, and swimming starts on February 27.
In all classes, students have been doing much more writing than last year. Writing from all classes is kept in our writing folder.
Students have been doing lit circles, lit circle groups. The students read a self-selected book in a small group and discuss it. Many students refer lit circles to a class novel, which the whole class would read and discuss.
On January 16th, there will be no school because of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and February vacation is February 18th to 26th.
In all eighth-grade science classes, the students are writing an essay for the DuPont Challenge. Entries will go from all across the country, but if someone from Cape wins, there are some great prizes, including a personal trip to Disneyland for the student and one adult, and the teacher and one guest.
Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments from our high school representatives. Abby or Sasha, who would like to start?
I'll go. So, one of the big things that happened this month in the high school was actually, was because of Sasha, she actually painted letters, or numbers, on each floor of our building, which is really helpful considering it's built on a hill, so it can often be difficult to navigate. And they're really pretty, too. So Sasha did a really nice job on those. And also, a big thing is midterms are next week, which is a big cause of stress in the high school right now. And the science team is competing as we speak. And yeah, Sasha?
Sorry. So, not a lot has happened since we had winter break, and now we're sort of getting through the grunt work before midterms, and not a lot is happening because people are studying and trying to prepare for those. But the school is working on iPad integration, and so we're, the high school has solicited a group of students to take a class second semester that will serve as an iPad help desk, so when students get their iPads in May, they'll have a place to go if they have questions. The speech team is in first place right now, and the debate team is second. The math team has been doing very well. The sophomores are currently planning Winter Fest, which is a series of games between classes. And that's about it that's happened. It's been very slow. But our barbecue team is also undefeated. That's good news there.
What's a barbecue?
Well, I don't know if I would call it a team. It's more of a barbecue club. But they get together once a month and learn how to grill, and there's a fee, and they buy a large quantity of meat and grill it once a month.
Has all the winter sports started since our last?
Yes, winter sports have started, and they're like almost halfway through the season, I believe. There's just a really big boys' basketball game against Poland, which they won, which was unexpected. So, it's been good.
Great, great. As a parent who has wandered aimlessly through the halls of the high school, up and down the staircase, wondering what floor I'm on, I'd like to thank you, Sasha, for painting those numbers. I'm looking forward to seeing them. I saw pictures from them. One of my children took pictures with his iPhone to show me, but they're beautiful. And thank you for doing that. I think you did that, was it Christmas Eve?
It was the day before Christmas Eve.
Yes. Well, thanks for taking your personal time to do that.
Of course.
Okay. All right, so comments from the public on agenda items. Anyone have any comments? Okay. Seeing none, number five, recognition. Christina Kuros. This is our second time getting to see you in the last year. Welcome back. Looking forward to hearing about your competition.
And it's very rare that we have an opportunity to introduce a national champion, so this is really exciting and we're really proud. So last week, the U.S. Cross Country Championships were held at Black Mountain, which is in Rumford, Maine, and Christina was, earned a silver medal in the sprint and the 7K, and also a gold medal in the 5K. So, very impressive. And as a result of that, she was also asked to join the U.S. team at the Paralympic World Cups, which will be taking place at the end of the month in Minnesota and in Wisconsin. So, it's a really neat accomplishment, and we're just thrilled. It's so cool, and it's been in the newspaper, and I just went online and checked out a couple of the websites, and if you get a moment, go to YouTube and put in Christina's name, and you'll see some of the clips. Very, very, very cool. So, I wasn't sure if Christina, if you wanted to say anything, or, number one, I think, if you could show us your medal. Did you bring your medals up?
No.
I love to go.
Wow.
Yeah. Here, I'll hold one. You hold this one.
Okay.
So, there are two silvers, and are gold. So, very, any words or any comments or questions?
I have a question, Christina. How long have you been, how long have you been competing?
This is my second season. I started last year, and I wanted to come back, so.
And last year, I saw you at Nordic skiing, and this year is in track?
Yeah, I'm doing both.
You're doing both? And how is it to do two, two sports for you and be in school?
I really like it. Keeps me busy, and it like changes throughout each season, so there's different people I talk to, and yeah, everyone's supportive, so it's nice.
And when you compete, who do you compete against? You compete with your fellow Cape students, or your mother was telling me a little bit that your, the point system that Jeff has set up, could you explain that to us?
Well, we don't really have anything yet for Nordic, but for wheelchair racing, they can compare my time with other wheelchair racers, like my same age, around the country, and then that's how they know like how many points I earn for the team.
That's great, though.
And these most recent accomplishments were Nordic skiing. And really neat story that just is showing true Cape Elizabeth pride. I think Christina was interviewed several times by a lot of the local media and the news, and wanted to make sure that she, everyone knew that she was also a Cape Elizabeth student and skied on the Cape Elizabeth Nordic team. So, that was an email that she had sent out to make sure that the reporter included that information in there. So, in true Cape fashion, that was a neat story.
I actually, I have some comments for Christina. My daughter also skis on the Nordic team, and I know from stories that I hear from the rest of the team members that I can tell you that you are a valued member of the Nordic team, and you are cherished for your undying spirit, and you do inspire the rest of the team to rise above. So, really, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? Well, thank you so much for setting such a great example for the students in Cape Elizabeth and for all of your work. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
And thanks for being a Caper and putting it right out there. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to Communications. We'll move straight to item B, which is the High School Math Department, Professional Learning Community Work. Do we have someone from the High School Math Department? And Jeff Shet? Great.
I'm just going to try to briefly set the table for Charlotte Hannah, who's co-chair of the math department, so she's going to take a bulk of the time. But I thought I would be helpful perhaps for the board before Charlotte speaks, because she's going to talk about the reality on the ground level of being a teacher in the classroom, what it is to try to implement the ideas of a professional learning community. And I know that the board has adopted continued work in building that sort of culture and practice within all of our schools. So I wanted to give you a couple of things. What I tried to do is boil down the essence, the major ideas, in just one sheet of paper. We'll see if I've captured it. So, I've called this the heart of a professional learning community, and I'm thinking it's going to connect to what Charlotte talks about. First of all, it is that teachers work in teams to answer three questions. And this is really it. What do we want students to learn? And that leads teachers as teams to try to identify key learning targets for each class. How do we know if they've learned it? Which leads them to develop in common as teams, common assessments to administer, and then to discuss the results of those assessments, to see what the assessments teach the teachers. And then, what do we do if they don't? And that, you know, forces the school or pushes the school to figure out, okay, if the students are not getting it at the level that we wish, what are we going to do about that? Because the notion is that the learning doesn't stop at the test or the assessment that's being given. And I bold-faced the word "teams" because it seems so obvious that a group together knows more than any one teacher, and that no one teacher can meet the needs effectively or match the needs effectively of every student in his or her class. But I will share that it's, is that traditionally in America, and I've said this to the board in other times, traditionally in America, the culture in schools, particularly high schools, was a teacher gets a roster of kids at the beginning of the year, figures out what they're going to teach, sort of in common, roughly in common, loosely in common with their fellow teachers. This culture hasn't existed in Cape Elizabeth High School for a while, but it's the tradition, and then closes the door and does the very best job they can, and works like crazy because teaching is a really hard and time-consuming job, to do the very best job they can. American high schools, Rick Dufour, who's sort of the guy that I've heard speak about professional learning communities, and Charlotte has seen him as well, he shares an anecdote about American high schools and says that traditionally, American high schools are a bunch of independent contractors joined by a common parking lot. And so, the whole idea of professional learning community is pushed away from that notion. And so then, the question is that I've asked here as well, why is this such a big deal, and why is it so hard? And the answers are, number one, it really does break a culture which has grown up over decades and decades and centuries. And number two, and probably most importantly, is it takes time, because you've got to get time for teachers to meet together, to do that really, really important work. So that's why it's a journey, and it takes years to really get to where you want to be. And the third point, I think, which is really important, particularly at a school like Cape Elizabeth, is it forces us to look deeper than averages, to determine how we are doing as a school. I put on the bottom a quote that Rick Dufour has shared by Barry Switzer, former coach of the Dallas Cowboys and I think the University of Oklahoma, that some people are born on third base and go through life thinking they've hit a triple. And we recognize as a group of educators at Cape Elizabeth that we're very fortunate to teach some really strong kids from really supportive families. So that challenges us to constantly ask, are we adding value? And we think we are. We think we can do even more. And I put on the back of this, and then I'm going to turn this over to Charlotte, a little thing that Rick Dufour shares at conferences about to demonstrate how averages can be misleading if you judge yourself by averages. So let's say this is an assessment of some sort, a quiz, a test, or whatever it is, and there's 15 kids in the class, and the team has defined that 80 is proficient. If you get 80, you're doing, you're meeting the standard of what the teacher expects from kids. So, 15 kids get that range of scores, and the average score is 74. And that looks really, really not too bad. You're right off of the class as a whole being proficient. So that's just a little ways away from doing really well. And then Dufour says, but look at the individual kids and how they did. And in fact, if you look at the total of 15 kids, there's only seven who are proficient, which means a majority are not proficient. So the proficiency rate is 47%. And that's the kind of, you know, looking at results, looking at data and that sort of thing that professional learning communities pushes us to consider. I'm not going to discuss this, and I will urge you while Charlotte is presenting, not to look at it, okay? But for your pleasure reading after tonight, a short article by Rick Dufour called "What Is a Professional Learning Community?", if you'd like to learn a little bit more about the practice.
One quick comment, Jeff. I don't think Barry Switzer ever ended a statement with a question. He was never vague about what he thought. I think that was next.
You know, I researched it actually one time to see if, where it came from, that Barry Switzer actually said it, and as I read, I wasn't convinced that it was Barry Switzer, but it's been attributed to him anyway. In many, many sites on the internet, so I'll continue that attribution. But I do want to introduce Charlotte Hannah, who's the co-chair of the math department at Cape Elizabeth High School. I do also want to say that in some ways, she is the, she is the forerunner in Cape Elizabeth High School of ideas of professional learning community before we ever became a professional learning community or had talked about that idea. Because one of the things that professional learning community says is, when kids are struggling, you've got to give them extra time and attention, not just keep passing them on. So about eight years ago, Charlotte wrote a grant to CF to get a program called Accelerated Math, which became the heart of a course that we've offered ever since then called Main Learning Results Math, because Main Learning Results was big, and we just haven't changed the title. And so now, freshmen who come in taking Algebra I Part 1 are also required to take Main Learning Results Math at the same time. And Charlotte and Elaine Brownell with her for quite a few years were the main teachers of that course. And it is the quintessential idea of being a professional learning community, about how do you get extra time and attention to kids who need extra help? So I'm going to turn this over to Charlotte.
Thank you, Jeff. I bring greetings from the math department. Sometimes we seem very separate from the school board, but we're all in the same ballgame here, so they've shared with me all of their ideas, and I'm going to share those with you tonight. The High School Math Department comes to the Professional Learning Community, or PLC process, with a couple of traits that have eased our entry into this whole idea. First of all, we have a specific and sequential curriculum, consistently taught by our teachers, with priority learning goals identified and timeline and pacing specified. We know what students should learn and when they should learn it, and that's an important first step for any PLC. Secondly, another trait we have is that we've always been a collaborative group. We, every day, share ideas and materials, talk about scope and pace, administer similar assessments if we're teaching the same subjects, and discuss student progress. And we also discuss the results of the assessments and innovative ideas and plans for our department in the future. Now, though we are quite professional and we are a collegial collaborative group, we are striving now to become more like the professional learning community that you'll read about and that Jeff has spoken about. Why? Because we, as a group of eight, are convinced that PLCs will improve learning for our students. Here's what we've been up to in the last year. We are piloting the kind of model PLC program in two subjects, algebra and geometry. The first thing we did is we have identified the essential learning objectives for each unit in each course. Yes, we had a few years back identified priority learning goals, but these targets for the PLC process are far more specific and measurable. They are the skills we'd like to guarantee that every student coming out of algebra or geometry will have. There'd be no more sliding through on attendance or homework completion, or not doing well on one unit but doing better on the other units so things average out. Students would have to demonstrate that they have attained a certain standard on each of the essential skills that we've identified. We've used two external sources to guide us in the selection of our critical skills. The first is the SAT topics, which is self-evident, and the second, Common Core standards, which are national standards developed in many different subject areas. So we spent a lot of time going over the core standards in math and use those to help us to identify our core target areas. And the Common Core standards were adopted by the state of Maine. We now have learning targets listed for each unit in both algebra and geometry. The next step, we created brief, specific, formative assessments for each skill. In fact, we have three test forms for each skill that we have in each subject. The first is given partway through a unit to all the students in the class. It's scored, recorded, and we try to give them back the very next class day. Yay, says the student who has mastered it. Yikes, I need to work on this, says the student who has not met the standard. There's no problem. The student is now focused on the specific area he must improve in, and so is the teacher. We know which students don't know which skill long before the end of the unit test, which goes into the grading system, before that is even administered. The student may receive continued practice in the whole group setting, or he may work within a small group, or he could receive one-on-one instruction either with the teacher as arranged before or after school or during a study hall, or during a period in the Achievement Center. Toward the end of the unit, the student will take Form B of that assessment, if he had trouble on Form A. If needed, further remediation is given, and a student could even take a third form of the assessment. So far, I've chosen not to enter the assessment scores into the grading program. Their purpose is simply to inform both the student and the teacher to improve learning. How is this working so far? I would say great. My freshman algebra students love the immediate feedback and specific information about how they can improve. They know that they must attain a certain proficiency in each essential skill. There's no getting a C, D, or F and just moving on. Yes, grades are given on summative tests and assessments, but on these skills, you just keep learning, keep working harder, keep meeting with your teacher until you've got it. When a student sees higher scores on a retest, the accomplishment seems to fuel her enthusiasm and motivation for what math content comes next. So next is what challenges still face us. Surprisingly, it's not a challenge to get the math teachers on board with PLC. I say it's not surprising because we've been burnt a lot in the recent past. We spent a lot of time on Main Learning Results, put in a lot of effort, a lot of hours, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, only to have it swept under the rug, and all of that came to naught. And yet, we still are enthusiastically supportive of the PLC process. There is even one among us eight math teachers who is the biggest skeptic, suspicious of any new trend or buzzword in education, and yet he's a major standard bearer in this process. He believes the PLC process makes sense and is the best way to improve learning for all of our students. Our biggest challenge, as always, is time and energy. We all have a lot on our plates to do in many, many, many regards, and not enough time always to do it. So we're working hard in our pilot process in algebra and geometry. I only have one course, my algebra course, in which I'm trying to implement the process, but others, like Chris Newell, have many geometry classes, four of them. So she's trying to implement it currently with close to 80 students, so that is a little bit more difficult. So I know Jeff is trying to search out ways to provide time that we have to meet with students who have not attained the mastery that we expect and afford them the help that they need, so that all students at every level reach the standards that we expect in our math education. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any questions or comments from the board? David?
Hi, Charlotte. I'm curious, I know quite a bit about this, but it says "high school PLC work." I mean, is there a movement afoot to sort of encompass within the high school PLC, the middle school PLC, and the foncoe PLC? It seems to be structured at the high school level, where I would think that, again, if you're trying to integrate this, that what's being done in the middle school would be important as well.
And what are you asking me?
Are you including the middle school in this process? It's titled "High School Math Department PLC Work."
Okay, so.
Why isn't it mass PLC work for Cape Elizabeth?
Yeah, and it would especially make sense since we're starting it in algebra and geometry, and both those subjects are taught at the middle school level to incorporate them into the algebra and the geometry PLC. Yeah, that's certainly something we would want to do. We're in the piloting process right now, so I would, our thought was to do this ourselves the first year and then try to expand it to the middle school. As far as having PLC work in the middle school in math and other subject areas, I guess we'd have to ask the other administrators whether that's something afoot. But I believe it would be something that would be valuable at all grade levels.
As soon as I respond, I agree with you.
As soon as I say, you can respond.
That isn't actually what I said. I said after I respond. I said, I agree with you. I think it has to be done vertically as well as just horizontally.
Yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
Are you the chair now?
He asked me. No, I don't want to be the chair either.
Yes, you may. And did you have something you wanted to say as well?
Just while Tom's coming to the microphone. I mean, I think this work is emerging in all of our schools, so we asked the high school math department to share some of the work so that you could have an understanding of what that might look like at a department level. But it's going on, I can assure you, in grade levels at the middle school, by departments, by grade levels at Pond Cove, and I know that's what Tom has to speak to.
Exactly. It sounds exactly what we're doing at the elementary school. Because I think I sent a little piece home in the weekly notices last week to say we had a pretty good system, but it's even better now, and it sounds exactly like the high schools. The kids get three assessments, the teachers meet to discuss it, and we're dealing with it. Just wanted to let you know, even at the elementary level.
Were you asking them more about cross-school?
Thank you for answering, asking my question, Jeff.
Yes, about whether, yes.
It was more of a vertical integration as opposed to...
Breaking down firewalls in terms of departments.
Well, what I was going to say, I think that's the first step. Now that we're on the same page with doing this, we're not talking about standards versus grades. We're more talking about achievement. So yes, I think it is going on.
That's what I think is going to be a critical... Well, it's the next step to vertically integrate this. It's the only way ultimately you're going to get the best result.
Just advocating for my school.
And I will just add to that, that I think the biggest hindrance to that right now is finding time, because schedules don't align K-12. So I know that I've heard consistently from faculty in our schools that they want to do that work. I met with a group yesterday, for example, after-school hours on a professional Monday, but for some of those people, that was after-school hours plus some after-school hours, because their school day ends at 2:30 and the other group's school day ends at 3:15. So you'll hear us advocate for time. I mean, as Jeff said and as Charlotte said, that continues to be the biggest roadblock. It's always a roadblock in schools, but I think we're determined not to let it get in our way, and there are creative ways to make that happen, and we have a commitment to that.
And I would strongly support if it's something the school board could do to create the time or whatever mechanism we can do, so that it can be vertical integration of this, I would strongly support.
Any other comments or questions? I would like to note, I didn't do so earlier, that our first two presentations, one on PLC, PLCs, and the other on literacy, are two of the shared goals that the board has selected along with the administration to make long-term goals for the district. So it is very exciting to see how it's all coming into play. And thank you very much for your work, Charlotte, and for, you know, really championing the cause of the PLCs. It's good for us as a board to see how it's being integrated in schools. It helps us understand how these goals are being achieved. So thank you very much. Yeah, and thanks for your work for the students, too. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. I look forward to reading the article. Okay, so for the second of our three major goals, we want to talk a little bit about literacy. And this month, we have the middle school staff to discuss their literacy intervention.
Okay.
Literacy and intervention.
Literacy what?
And intervention.
Okay. First of all, Abby and Sasha, I'd really like to know about this canyon earring trip and how I get onto that. It's in upcoming item 7B. Sasha, also, if you know anybody from the Grillin team, tell them congratulations. I hear they're sizzling.
Which team?
Grillin.
Oh, yeah.
No, moving right along. David, as usual, you're a plant in the audience for us. Thanks very much. You're talking about vertical alignment between PLCs, and the folks that are here to talk to you today are going to speak about initiatives that are going on in our literacy PLCs, which covers both goals. And one of the important pieces to that that I'll be stumping for as the discussions go on from a budget standpoint is about lead teacher, literacy lead teacher at the middle school. We used to have Jamie in that position, and Joel Schroeder, Jamie, and Linda Alfiero used to meet with the three schools and be able to coordinate the activities between the three. But we've kind of got that gulf now because we don't have that literacy position. So thank you very much for being there. Appreciate it. Picked right up on that.
I'm writing it down.
Thought I'd miss that one, didn't you? Okay, so it's titled as Middle School Staff Literacy Intervention. And we have been working in our literacy PLCs... That's not going to stay. We've been working in our literacy PLCs to determine the same answers to the same questions that Jeff was posing earlier, which came out of Defore's work, earlier works from the '90s. And the questions are great. They're, let's get people together to figure out what it is a student should know and be able to do. How do you know if they can do that? And what do you do if they're not meeting the standards that you have set forth? So in looking at those same levels of questions, we have constructed tutorials within our school day where we use data that teachers have readily available to them to find out which students need extra assistance. We provide that during the school schedule. It's targeted at literacy intervention strategies, whether it be fluency comprehension, could be about reluctant readers, trying to develop a passion for reading. It could be about something to do with the writing aspect of a particular component. So we think that we're right on track with the high school and look forward to more conversations with them about these kinds of things. We have representatives here tonight from grades five, six, seven, eight, and from the Media Center Library to talk to you about the initiatives that we're currently working on. You'll hear and you'll see that there's a number of things in literacy, the volume, and then you'll see the carryover, that you'll hear things mentioned repeatedly. So that shows you that we're not looking at it from the perspective of, well, that's nice that the fifth-grade team is doing that, but you guys take care of that. We'll work on these other things in the sixth grade or seventh grade. So I'm going to introduce... Elizabeth Johnston's going to be the first person to present. She's going to represent... Oh, excuse me, no, Sally Connolly. She's representing grade five. She has a looping thing. It gets me every time. So Sally's going to talk about some work that we're doing. We have three consultants that were currently taking advantage of their services in the district. We have at the elementary and into grades five and six, we have Tammy Mulligan and Claire Landrigan that we connected through with Wayland, Massachusetts. And they're doing just great work with us on assessments and how do we know exactly where... How can we pinpoint what the areas of weaknesses are that schools may have? And then we're beginning some work with Penny Kittel. That'll be coming up very shortly, actually, as the spring moves, as we move closer to spring. Penny Kittel will be working seven through 12. So we're fortunate at the middle school because we bridge both of those people as resources. So you'll hear a little bit about some of the Tammy/Claire task force work as well. Sally?
As a language arts teacher, I'm always encouraging children to compare and contrast. And if I were to compare the two women I'm going to talk about to favorite books of mine, I would compare them to War Horse for their tenacity, trusting partnership, work ethic, and discipline; the screenplay Good Will Hunting for their intelligence; the Help for their patience, selfless assistance, and Grace Under Pressure; and even The Devil Wears Prada for their individual style, quick wit, and humor. Tammy Mulligan and Claire Landrigan, co-owners of Teachers For Teachers Consulting Firm in Lexington, Massachusetts, became involved with our school district, specifically our literacy education, in 2010. In November of 2009, Jeff Shad presided over the English Language Arts Committee. In that role, he scrutinized our curriculum in English Language Arts and presented his concern about gaps in instruction and at-risk readers, approximately 20% of our population, to the school board. Enter Tammy and Claire. Steve was just referring to Wayland, Mass. And Wayland is demographically very similar to Cape Elizabeth. Wayland's literacy scores were weaker than what administrators, school board members, teachers, and parents would have liked. At the end of their five years in Wayland, Tammy and Claire's, through their work, the literacy scores were exemplary. A K through six language arts curriculum coordinator was hired, as well as one for grades six through eight. We are part of a consortium that includes Tammy and Claire, and we subscribe to the Choice Literacy Blog, in which they, Carol Mosher and Joan Bushy, authors of The Daily Five and The Cafe System, are also participants. Thanks to Jeff Shad's contact to Tammy and Claire, their first meeting with administrators, school board member Kate Williams Hewitt, and teachers grades K through five took place in June of 2010. The literacy task force was formed. Grade six was added this year. Former Superintendent Alan Hawkins attended meetings, and present superintendent Meredith Neto attends. IS, RTI, ELL, and social workers are also represented. In addition to the district's funding of the literacy task force, Tom Ismeyer wrote a CF grant allowing for these two literacy gurus or consultants to make four visits per year to Pond Cove. This year, this fall, Tammy and Claire visited the middle school and Pond Cove. They will be back in March, April, and May. Tammy and Claire have provided professional development, literacy goals, and means to achieve those goals. They have urged us as teachers to increase our assessments, data collection, use of trade books, differentiated teaching, and careful recording of data. What was formerly known as the literacy task force is now called the literacy assessment force. If you have the opportunity to attend one of our meetings with Tammy and Claire, I highly encourage you. They are dynamos. They are filled with knowledge and ideas, enthusiasm. They're trend setters, and they have so many ideas for students who are at-risk readers and for teachers with our professional learning communities. I have handouts for each of you from our most recent meeting with Tammy and Claire that was held in October. And these handouts include the next steps for Pond Cove as well as the middle school. And on the middle school page, you'll see a statement that says, "Create data walls in grade five and six." I'm not going to pass this out because it does have students' names, but this is a data wall. And if you notice, I have green, yellow, and red. And you can relate those to a traffic light. The green, go right ahead. These are the strongest readers. The yellow are cautionary. They're doing all right, but there is certainly room for improvement. And the red represent the children who are at risk. So it was my pleasure to present this to you, and I will now pass out my handouts.
Any questions for Mrs. Connolly while she's passing these out?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Hi.
Thank you. I will point out that I think the data wall that Mrs. Connolly just held up looks a lot like the data walls you saw with the Pond Cove presentation in the video clip. It's the same system. Maybe different data for kids of different ages, but it's the same idea.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Johnston, and I actually moved between the fifth and the sixth grade. But today, I'm representing the sixth grade. And I have two sort of quick hitters for you, strategies that we're using. The first is one that we're using to really target some skills that we recognize need improvement, and the second is one that I'm just excited about and the kids are really excited about. So the first is the Comprehension Toolkit, which we purchased a couple years ago, ago now, excuse me. And we decided to use it because we recognized that a lot of our students were having difficulty reading and comprehending informational text. We noticed this on NWA and NECAP. Excuse me. So the Toolkit is a tool already used by the fourth grade in Pond Cove. So it seemed like a logical fit. It's also a great tool because we're using it, thank you, in the social studies classroom mostly. However, a lot of us who are language arts teachers also are using it as well. And it's a good fit because there are some scripted things for those of us who aren't as comfortable, and then there are also just good lessons. So it gives us a common set of vocabulary to use with the kids, strategies that another teacher could pull out and use again that wouldn't be like reteaching them. So we're working to determine right now which lessons fit best at which grade level, which lessons are maybe our core lessons that all students are going to get. And it's also just a really nice tool for differentiation. It can be, we can all be using the same text, and kids are working on different schools from the Toolkit, I'm sorry, lessons from the Toolkit. Or we could all be using different texts, more appropriate at each student's level, and then, but we're using different scales to look at it. We do need to develop a library of articles, though, and other high-interest materials to go along with our social studies topics that fit with that so that we can really use it most effectively. But it's in the works, and it's in progress, and it's working well. We're seeing improvement. So that's the first. The second is a few e-portfolios I wanted to show you, electronic portfolios. And these are done by my students, although my students aren't the only ones who are So this is a Google website, and it's free, so that makes it a logical choice. But it is also logical because this is what I can look at when I'm looking at Kristi and what she does, and it's not a big folder that I have to carry home, and it's readily It is also something that is sort of up to date with the technology interests and scales of our students. So that's why I think my kids are really excited about it. It's basically, we use it as a collection of work, a place to collect their work, but also a place for them to reflect. So we set up some guidelines, and when I say we, I'm talking about myself and my teammate. We ask the students for each subject that's up here, that they talk about what it means to them. And then we also ask them to include a description of the assignment with some reflective questions that they're answering with any assignment that they post on their website. So a lot of times, they get pretty personal. I think that's just because of the nature of middle school students. And Kristi's intro, I think, is a really good example of that. It's just a really great outlet for her to say who she is, what she loves, and it's really nicely written, I think. And so then across the top here are just tabs for each subject area. This is math for Kristi. So she's chosen to separate it into ongoing and then other class work and projects. And I think I looked at this, and this is a simple assignment that they do. They love it, first of all, but also that piece of paper, I think, will be gone pretty soon. But she's got this picture and her reflection and the things that she learned from the assignment right here that will be there for a long time. This is another student. It's a different type of outlet for him. He's a really funny guy. So, you know, he chooses to kind of show his work in that way and reflect in that way, and it's him, and it fits, and it's also really good work. So it, because this is a collection of every subject area, it promotes all of us in every subject area to add to it. It's easy to do to add to it as well. It's easy to do, to add to it as well. And I think especially for math, that's why I keep clicking on it, I think math is one of the hardest areas for us to try to integrate writing, and this is all the writing that he did about math, which is a lot, and what he learned. He's able to add an example right there, and even just an overview of what he's doing And so because my students have looped me, these started in fifth grade, and we're continuing them in sixth grade, and they've been working since about February of last year on these. And so it's not a whole lot of amount of time. We don't even work on them every month. It's sort of when we finish or when we need to update. But they've learned a lot about technology, specifically Google and all that that has to offer. And so they also have a lot of respect for technology, machines, and things like that because they see it as a tool. And then for writing, because that's one of my personal interests for them, I love that they can look at the writing pieces that they've done. And so letters about literature is assignment that I had them do in fifth grade, and then again in sixth grade. And so he can reflect on that and look at the fifth grade sample and the sixth grade sample right there and make comparisons about how he's grown. So it's an easy fit, I think. And then just the last one that I want, our last student portfolio I wanted to show you. This is, just sort of shows to me that it's working really well for our kids. This is reflection on work that they've finished recently. I know today she was working on her right now. But so work they've finished recently, and she wrote all of this about the Simple Machines project that they did. And so I pulled from last year a written reflection that she did, and she's an awesome student. But it was a couple of sentences on the piece of paper, but on here, she sat down on this without any prompting or prodding or anything like that. So I just think it speaks to who they are, really. And so then from there, because they're so comfortable with sites and things like that, it's just a natural extension for them. So this is a social studies project we did where I gave them the assignment, I gave them sort of my expectations for what they should do, and then they chose to make the assignment. So the website. So through this, they ended up writing far more than I would have ever required in any report, but it was easy, simple for them. They didn't feel like they were doing that much, I think. And it just, it turned out beautifully, and that was their choice to do it. And then the last thing is a very, very new project that probably the best volunteer I've ever worked with in my life is working on, my kid Sarah Lennon. And she is helping kids do an online magazine for, as an extension for some of these writers that are just, they need more. So they're creating this online magazine. It's also totally their thing. They've decided what they want it to be. They want it to have contests and all of that. So because we've been working so much with websites and portfolios, they're really just taking off with some other natural extensions. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Elizabeth, you're using a lot of technology here, but you're one year before kids get their laptops.
Yeah.
How do they do it? How many computers do you have per child so that they're able to do this?
We have a cart of a little over 20, kind of depends on the day, for the sixth grade to share, so six classrooms.
Oh, wow.
And we have the computer lab, which thankfully, because the seventh and eighth grade have laptops, it's pretty available to the fifth and sixth grade. But I think as we introduce more and try to, the more I tell people, "You've got to do this, you've got to try this," the more they're in need, and so we find ourselves kind of fighting for them.
Yeah, I'm impressed with how much they write.
Yeah.
If given the laptops.
Me too. It's amazing. I mean, it's really, it's a lot less, not fighting, but fighting to get them to do it.
Right. That's great. Anyone else have comments or questions? Thank you.
There's a little bit of an opportunity coming our way as far as technology goes as well because of the rollout of the iPads at the high school, which means that there are some carts of laptops that Gary and I are talking about. So I think those are going to need a home, and we're looking to use those in our IS suite and also with the fifth and sixth grades to stop having to cannibalize some of those older pieces of equipment. So that's a great opportunity. Elizabeth mentioned the nonfiction resources that we're building our collection of in social studies, and those are, you'll hear us refer to those frequently as trade books. So take the topics that are covered in the social studies text. Let's say, for instance, in the fifth grade, there's a section on Native American Indians and the different, the early cultures during colonial, during colonization and settlement. And so what we're doing is looking for resources that cover the same topics, but cover, allow students to have several different levels of readability and also high-interest resources. So we're trying to make, as recommended by Tammy and Claire, they're saying, "Look, you guys need to really work on building up that trade book resource that you have so that this text is available to all students," and it's yet another great suggestion from them that we're taking to heart. Next is Paul Casey from the seventh grade.
Hi, everybody. My name is Paul Casey. I have really kind of three different roles at the middle school. I'm a teacher of seventh grade language arts. I'm currently heading up the RTI program for seventh and eighth graders, and I am one of the cross-country coaches at the middle school. And what I'm here tonight in the capacity of is just to talk to you a little bit about literacy at the seventh grade level. Handout for you. And what I'd like to do is talk a little bit at the beginning here, kind of about framework of this house of literacy, okay? And there, where I want to go, is to talk a little bit about what's happening on my seventh grade team in terms of literacy goals. And then I want to talk a little bit about how, talk a little bit about our humanities block, and a little bit about how we're kind of integrating literacy into social studies and how it all kind of works. And that's kind of on the last page of your handout. Well, the way that I began the year in my classroom was to talk to the kids a little bit about literacy and its goal and kind of what we're trying to do here in Cape Elizabeth. And one of the opening day activities is we kind of put together, we had a big discussion exactly about what literacy was, okay? And you can see from A and B there, a couple of samples of kind of student definitions, okay? And then from there, what happened is we put together kind of a classroom definition of what that means to be literate, really what is literacy, okay? And from there, I went to, we talked a little bit about, you know, levels of literacy. We talked about literal literacy, we talked about interpretive literacy and utilization literacy, kind of three different levels, and that we read for different purposes, different texts are different purposes. And that pretty much happened across the board in all the seventh grade classes, okay? The PLC team that I'm involved with in the seventh grade put together, if you look at the third page, three goals for our seventh grade PLC team. And the goals that we agreed upon were to strive to create consistency, fidelity in the delivery of new social studies curriculum and language arts curriculum, to create deliberate assessed scores, and score effectively forms of unit assessments that meet the modalities of all learners. And the third one that kind of ties into our tutorial is to create a method that identifies students who need direct intervention, okay? So we have kids who are working in the latter part of the days in literacy tutorials, sort of social studies tutorials, and that's really pretty much up and running and organized, okay? You know, in addition to that, what's happening in all of the classes is that people are developing, collecting portfolios, sample writings that kids are doing. I just, I'm going to give you a random sample of some things that are going on here, okay? I picked one of these in my class, and I know that my colleagues are doing similar things. The kids read an article out of the forecaster. This would be kind of literal interpretation here about the arboretum at Fort Williams. Did some kind of local research around that. They write oral responses to independent reading. One of the, I think the first thing that they wrote on this year, which was the assessment, was a decision that they made in their lives that had some impact on them. They were writing about a person that they admired. They do letters of reflection. I'm just kind of running through this, kind of giving some random samples of kind of what they're writing about. They write about their favorite places in nature. They, kind of interesting here, kind of tying into when we were reading about Greek myths, okay? What they had to do was create a myth around something that happened at the middle school. Why it exists now. This young student who wrote about, as you probably know, we're big into Cornell notes, and that's something that happens across the board. This young author writes about Cornell circumstance, how Mr. Conley received this message from above about that it was time to come about and promote Cornell note-taking in the school. He heard messages, and therefore, he's kind of promoting that. You know, we go on, we've got more reflection letters, you know, poetry units, things like that. So that's just kind of a random sample of kind of some of the things that happen in the world of writing. In the world of reading in the seventh grade, it's very kind of heavy self-selection. The kids around that are involved in literary circles. There's a lot of group discussion that goes on around that. In tying into, we, in the seventh grade, we do do two class novels a year. The one that we're focused on right now is The Giver. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but that's a great book, and they're really kind of enthused about that, and that has really kind of drawn a lot of my readers in. We, if you look to kind of the last page here, this is kind of our breakdown of what happens kind of unit by unit in social studies, in language arts, across the board. Our social studies, the way we approach social studies in terms of language arts, we start the year with something called G-Srite, and we talk about kind of nations of the world, nations of Greece, Rome, Europe, and all of that, in terms of geography, social climate, political climate, religion, religious, religion, technology, economics, intellectual climate there. And I'm going to kind of pick one for you. I'm going to go to October 3rd through the 20th, okay? At that point, we are studying Greece and Rome. We're looking at the geography and the history of Greece and Rome. We slide on to the literary aspect of that. We're into the Rick Riordan books where they make a selection, okay? They're reading the books, they create a myth on their own, okay? We have literary circles running around these. Earlier in the year, what they ended up doing, I go back to September 6th, and I'm just giving these kind of sample examples of kind of what's going on in this school on a daily basis. We start looking into Europe, okay? The, that's a self-select. They select a book where the setting is Europe, okay? It could be a story, it could be fiction, nonfiction, and around that, there's a storyboard that goes on, there's a map that goes on, and they all give a book talk around kind of their European reading, and there are some things that they kind of follow there. So if you see here, we're really kind of working hard to kind of integrate that. In the seventh grade right now, we have what we call a humanities block that, where all of the seventh grade teachers have the two groups of students, you know, two classes of students, back-to-back, same students in language arts and social studies. And that seems to be really working pretty well for us, very well for us, because we're able to kind of integrate many, many components here, if you look kind of at the handout here. I think that's pretty much what I have to tell you. If you kind of want to look back, I just put this out for you, just for your own kind of reading. My goal today was for you to, for me to kind of provide a little bit of insight into what's going on on a daily basis in this place we call the middle school, what happens in the confines of these walls there every day. And this is pretty much how it goes there for us. I must add, it's a pleasure for me to be there with these kids every day. It's a true pleasure.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes.
How's their stamina with literacy at the same time?
Well, you know, one of the things that we're really, really working on, and one of the things that I took away from the first workshops, is kind of literacy stamina, being able to stay connected to the text for a long period of time. One of our opening day speakers here talked about, you know, freshmen in college with the expectation of reading anywhere from 400 to 700 pages of text a year, okay? They go through their high schools, things look pretty good, they get to the ninth grade, all this reading shows up, and it's a struggle. And that's what we're attempting to do, is kind of build some stamina with our students. And we look for sustained silent reading, and, you know, we put out the 25, 30 minutes of reading at night, and just kind of to build endurance, connecting with the text. I mean, that's really what it's all about for prolonged periods of time.
Great question.
We all set?
I think we are. Thank you so much.
So that's the language arts, social studies side of Paul. The other side of, one of the three sides he mentioned, it's Elizabeth, was the work he's doing with response to intervention for students. He works with our at-risk learners. He's putting together an outreach program to involve these students and reluctant learners to get some buy-in to what's happening at school. And, you know, Paul's, you've got to come and see him in action sometime when he's working particularly with these students, because he's kind of, I see him as our, what's the guy's name I just gave you? Harrison Ford, you know, the rumpled professor that comes in with the da-da-da-da. We have SST meetings, and Paul shows up, and he's got great things lined up, and he's really working hard on behalf of students. So he's doing the job of three different people.
I'd like to come back and talk to you about that sometime.
Yes.
I think it'd be great since, because take your time.
Thanks, Paul.
Doesn't he walk like Harrison Ford in the movie? Come on. Okay. The next person we have speaking to you is Jamie Micho, familiar person from, former, previously, for two years, she was half-time lead literacy, and then another period, the first year, she was two-tenths. So we carved out time and thanks to, oh, it was four years? Very nice, my math is working. Okay. And CEIF was very gracious about working with us to support that position, but we don't, we don't have that. The unfortunate part for Jamie is people still look at her and go, "Yeah, you're still that for us." So she's like, "Yeah, I'm carrying a full caseload right now, folks."
Right. I'm Jamie Micho, and I'm here to talk to you about eighth grade literacy. I'm giving you an overview. There are four teachers who all teach language arts and social studies in the eighth grade. I'm one of them. And those, of course, are the heavy literacy classes. That's where a lot of the reading and writing goes on, but those aren't the only classes where reading and writing is going on, especially this year. We're promoting in the eighth grade, and we have been, I think, consistently promoting that for the past five to 10 years, choice. Choice, we feel, is key for motivation and to keep kids interested in reading and writing and feeling positive about reading and writing. So we are heavily promoting choice in both reading assignments and writing assignments. We found over the years, and this is my 18th year in the eighth grade, that kids respond better to reading and writing assignments and do better work when they have some choice. The best writing I get is when I give my students free-choice writing assignments. They pick the topic, and they pick the genre. In reading in the eighth grade, we expect them always to be in the middle of an independent reading book, a self-selected book. We use literature circles. You know what those are, I'm sure, small group discussions, where kids pick a group and read it with a small group of other kids, and they lead their own discussions. We also have some limited-choice assignments for this. For example, we soon plan to ask our students to pick an historical fiction novel about American history in the time period that we're teaching in eighth grade social studies. So we want to make that connection, and Amanda has created a list for us. She's done a lot of our legwork for us. She's done a lot of our legwork for us. And we may develop literature circles around American history, historical fiction, both this year and in the future. This is a brand-new social studies curriculum for us, so we're still working things out. In writing, again, as much choice as possible, from total free choice to limited choice. For example, if they are writing an essay about To Kill a Mockingbird, they have several choices of topic. Teacher-assigned reading now in the eighth grade is limited to one class novel per year, teacher-assigned homework reading. The rest is self-selected reading. We expect them to be reading every night, but we're only assigning one class novel, and that's To Kill a Mockingbird. The reason for this is the choice issue. We've done some of our own research, some of our own interviews and surveys. I did a lot of them during my graduate work, and found that consistently, it didn't matter what the book was, if the teacher assigned it, the student rated it lower than if it was a book they selected on their own. And part of our real goal is to send these kids to high school with a positive attitude toward reading and writing, and perhaps regain some of the love for reading and writing that they seem to lose some time in the middle school years with all their, with all the conflicts that they have for their reading and writing time. So we are just assigning To Kill a Mockingbird as a class novel. That doesn't mean that they're not reading very much, and it doesn't mean that they're not, that we're not guiding them in their reading. For a lot of our common readings, we use the anthologies that we were able to get through the Text We Can funds. We all have sets of literary anthologies available in the classroom, and from these we gather our short stories, our essays, our poetry, and the other things that we read in common and discuss in common in class. And the reason for that's pretty simple. If you assign a student a short story, you read and discuss it in class, maybe write about it, do some activities around it, it's just a short story. If they don't like it, we move on to something else, and they still have their self-selected reading that they're assigned to do for motivation. And it's through the short literature that we move toward one of our learning goals. We're still looking at the English Language Arts learning goals that were written a few years back, and that's to expose them to good literature, to literature that will increase their critical thinking skills, literature that will build a vocabulary, literature that will help with their reading comprehension. For example, this fall, all eighth graders read The Tell-Tale Heart by Edgar Allan Poe, and another story that they all read was The Adventure of the Speckled Band by Arthur Conan Doyle. And since then, I've had kids come up to me and say, do you have any more of those Edgar Allan Poe stories? Do you have any more Sherlock Holmes? And these are not easy stories, and the vocabulary they learn from them is pretty amazing. So we're confining most of our teacher-assigned reading to short literature, which we read and discuss in common. Let's see, what else? Okay. Tutorials have been mentioned, and the tutorials are both tutorials to bring students up to par who've been identified on their NWA and Kneecap scores as not meeting grade-level standards in reading. So we do run a reading tutorial in the eighth grade, and I know the seventh grade does as well. We also have now instituted enrichment tutorials in the area of literacy. We've identified again students who are advanced in the areas of literacy according to Kneecap and NWA scores, and those students have been invited into literacy enrichment tutorials that are now being offered. Social studies, we all teach language arts, and we all teach social studies, and that works out well because social studies is a literacy-heavy curriculum also. So we have a brand-new American history curriculum. Our responsibility is to teach American history from the writing of the Constitution through post-Civil War Reconstruction. And this is new for us. We had a little bit of an issue with getting the textbooks, and we are literally spending every spare moment planning, planning writing assignments to go along with our curriculum, planning assessments that involve constructed response writing for the students. And this, the four of us are doing together on a weekly basis. And I think we're developing some pretty good writing assignments. Right now, my students should be at home, working on, they are assigned to be a Lowell Mill girl, one of the girls who worked in the Lowell Mills during the Industrial Revolution, and they had to create a character and write a magazine article for The Lowell Offering, which was a magazine published at the Lowell Mills during that time period, and write about their day and their work and their life in the boarding house and all of that. So those are due Thursday. If, you know, if they're listening, I hope they're working on that. So we're trying to develop some great writing assignment, and among the four of us, I think we're doing pretty well at that. What else was I? Yep, we're developing writing assignments for each unit in our social studies curriculum and other assessments. Our writing folders now contain much more than language arts writing. Mine just went home in December. I send them home three times a year to parents for their, for them to review. And in most cases, well, in some cases, because they take different allied arts courses at different times, but, for instance, one of my students in her writing folder, she had assignments that she'd done for language arts, assignments that she'd done for social studies, a science assignment that she'd done, a math assignment that she'd done. They had, Mr. Fuchero had them writing about how to solve a certain problem. It was way beyond me, but it's in their writing folders. Mrs. Leonard just gave me some French writing assignments that will go in their writing folders. So literally, we are writing across the curriculum, and we're now keeping it in one spot, not electronic yet, but Elizabeth's going to show us how to do that soon, I'm sure. And the language arts teacher keeps the writing folder and sends it home several times a year for parents to review, look at, give some comments on. So we're definitely writing across the curriculum now in the eighth grade. Oh, and art, yes, Mrs. Roaner had them write an artist statement, so if they had art, first trimester parents saw a piece of writing from art class in their folder. We're teaching a lot of reading strategies through social studies class. Elizabeth mentioned the comprehension toolkit, we're not using that, but we're still teaching reading strategies, because they're still, no matter how proficient they are, they can still learn and improve their reading strategies. And we do that largely in social studies class, where we teach strategies of informational reading. How do you read a textbook effectively and efficiently? And we're also teaching Cornell note-taking method, which we adopted school-wide so that we can learn one consistent way of taking notes. We're teaching that in our eighth-grade social studies classes. We have been experimenting with a vocabulary series for the past few years. One of the things that Jeff, as our ELA leader, noted the need for was some consistency from school to school, and we have a vocabulary series that's in use in grades six through 11. And this year, for the first time, we, in eighth grade, have a core curriculum out of that vocabulary system. We have made an agreement to all teach all the lessons that involve word roots, prefixes, and suffixes. We will at least, at bare minimum, teach those lessons to the eighth graders. So the high school can count on next year, their ninth graders will have had certain lessons in word roots, prefixes, and suffixes. And beyond that, we do what we can with the vocabulary builder, we try to fit it in where we can. But we definitely now are teaching 10 core lessons from the book that the high school can count on. And PLCs. We, I talked about the work we're doing within our grade level, the four of us who work together. We are also working with the seventh-grade literacy teachers. Steve managed to get us common planning time this year, so the seventh and eighth-grade language arts and social studies teacher share a planning period, and we have formed a PLC, and we have selected a topic to study. We are studying, we talked about a lot of different topics that related to reading and writing, but the one that really interested us the most was how do we create independent and motivated readers? That's what we want to work on. What can we do to make our students more independent and more motivated readers? So we're doing a book study, first off, in our PLC. We've selected two books. One is called The Book Whisperer: Awakening the Inner Reader in Every Child by Donald Lynn Miller, and the other is Igniting a Passion for Reading by Stephen Lane. These books came with good reviews from people that we trust, literacy experts that we trust. So we're going to try those out. We just ordered the books, and hopefully Steve will pay for them. But we are going to work together, the eight of us who teach literacy in seventh and eighth grade, with these books maybe as a starting place to explore this problem, and maybe come up with some action plan that we can put into place. And one reason we chose this topic is because we are looking forward to working with reading consultant Penny Kittle, who will be working with us soon in the spring. And we know that this is an area in which she has a lot of expertise, creating independent and motivated readers, kids who actually read the books and not the Sparks Notes. So we're kind of excited about that, right, Paul? Yeah. So that's kind of a summary of what's going on in the eighth grade. It has changed a lot since I started here in 1994, when I was given some class novels and a grammar book, and said, go to it. But now we actually have some learning goals that we work toward, and we're doing a lot more sharing and collaborating than we ever have. We've, we are, the kids are doing twice as much writing as they were doing even five to 10 years ago. We have literally doubled the amount of writing assignments that we give in the eighth grade, which is why I'm really tired right now. So we have to read it all. Any questions? John?
You said a couple of things about, about choice.
Yeah.
You said that it was working very well in the eighth grade, and you said, but you said that the students that come to you in eighth grade are often disillusioned about reading. How early does, does choice begin? Does that begin in eighth grade, or do the students have choice?
It begins, I know that all of my colleagues in the middle school are trying to incorporate more choice in reading assignments. It's not that they come to us disillusioned in reading. We know that along about seventh grade, kids lose interest in reading or motivation to read. That corresponds with when their interest in socializing increases and their, the time they spend on sports. And of course, these days with electronic media, you know, the time they spend in front of a computer screen, sometimes you're reading. You know, that's reading too, though. But we, it's not just a capillar problem, it's a nationwide problem where kids start to lose interest or a love for reading and a desire to do it independently along about seventh grade. So this is a problem that everybody faces, and it's not a problem that previous teachers contributed to. They're helping us with that. They're also incorporating choice and other motivational features into their teaching.
Thank you.
Meredith?
Not a question, but just one thing I would add, and Jamie and I had the chance to speak about this earlier in the week or last week, it all kind of runs together, but I think the fact that our students have the opportunity to participate in world languages beginning in grade three makes a huge difference in our ability to work with them. I mean, you referenced a grammar book a couple minutes ago. Grammar instruction is made so much easier when you're working with students who already have a facility in a world language. So that really enhances our ability, the reading and writing needs of the child across the board.
Absolutely. We couldn't, we couldn't do as much as we do without world language. They're like our co-teachers as far as language.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you check out the newest entry in the middle school blog, today's entry, you'll see a link to some writing from Señorita Dion's Spanish class, and that's in a resource called Mixbook. If you haven't seen the app, this Mixbook, that is cool stuff. I'm enjoying it already. The next person that we have, our last speaker for you today, is Amanda Kozaka, and we use three letters to describe her energy, enthusiasm, the resources she brings to us, that's W-O-W.
Okay. So as the librarian, I have a very concise, organized list for you. I'm just going to list some of the programs that are in place at the middle school library. I'm sure that I will get to the end of the list and realize I forgot something, but I think this is a good, a good scope of what's going on. To start with, the library has flexible scheduling as opposed to a fixed class schedule, which allows students to access the library throughout the school day as well as before and after school. It means that anytime the student comes into the library, someone is there, available, usually me, if not me, an ed tech, our library ed tech, to help them select books, because we do promote self-selection as much as possible, or simply to help them find books that support their learning. The library has an active interlibrary loan arrangement with the Pond Cove and high school libraries. If a student is looking for a title or a subject that is available in another library, we can provide, we can, provided that it's age-appropriate. Sometimes we limit what they can access from the high school. If it's age-appropriate, we can have the book sent to the middle school library for the students to borrow. This resource-sharing arrangement allows even greater access to reading materials for our students. The library is currently running a reading contest for the entire school. For each book that a student completes during the school year, they may fill out an entry slip and submit it to the library. The slips are divided into a girls' jar and a guys' jar. At the end of the school year, one slip will be selected at random from each jar, and both of those students will win a free Kindle. There's been a lot of excitement about this reading contest. It's not only encouraging students that are already reading a lot, but it's encouraging those kids that maybe weren't sure if they wanted to spend time reading to finish that book they've got going or pick another one. The library is constantly expanding its collection of high-quality, well-reviewed, and high-interest titles. In particular, the graphic novel section has grown tremendously in the past couple of years, and it continues to be the most popular section in our library. Fortunately, that graphic novels appeal to the students who are often, are reluctant readers, so we are seeing an increase in reading by some students that might otherwise not be interested in coming into the library. The library is promoting the Main Student Book Award Program. The MSBA is a joint project of the Main Library Association, the Main Association of School Libraries, and the Main Reading Association. It's designed to, and this is a quote from their site, "expand the literary horizons of students in grades four through eight by encouraging them to read, evaluate, and enjoy a selection of new books, and to choose a statewide favorite by written ballot each spring." The library currently has 33 of the 38 books on the MSBA list of nominations. The ones we don't have are just a little young for us. They might be more like picture books. The library is promoting the MSBA program through special displays, book talks, bookmarks, and we even have an informational website that is linked to the library website that allows students to not only read summaries and reviews of the titles, but to watch little video trailers that are on YouTube, or visit author websites, which is a great way to get them excited about the stories. For students who become eligible to vote by reading three or more titles on the list, there will be a voting day in the library at the end of March. The votes are due April 1st, and it's a wonderful way for students to be involved in a statewide program to select a book award. It's a pretty unique program. The library is also promoting Books for Boys through the adoption of the Guys Read Program. If you're not familiar with Guys Read, you can find out more at guysread.com. Guys Read is a web-based literacy program designed for boys. Its stated mission is to help boys become self-motivated lifelong readers. Guys Read was founded by John Cheska, if you don't ask me to spell it, it's a very confusing Polish name. Cheska is a former teacher, a popular children's author, and was named by the Library of Congress and the Children's Book Council as the National Ambassador for Young People's Literature with the responsibility of promoting literacy. The library has several hundred titles that were selected from pre-made reading lists on the Guys Read website. These books are specially labeled and promoted in the collection. We even have bookmarks that we've downloaded from the Guys Read site, and it's, it seems to be a very popular program and a great way to connect guys, especially reluctant guys, to some good books that appeal to guys' interests. Okay. The flexible library schedule that I mentioned earlier also allows for greater opportunities for collaboration between the librarian and teachers to identify appropriate and appealing reading materials for classroom use. The library has created specialized bibliographies, such as Jamie mentioned before, for both individuals. I've worked with some, quite a few RTI students. individuals, I've worked with some, quite a few RTI students, as well as for entire content areas, such as the historical fiction list for eighth grade, resources for curriculum units, and literature circle selection, suggestions. Okay. In addition to the literacy programs that focus on developing healthy reading habits and comprehension skills, the high school and middle school librarians have been actively developing in collaboration with teachers, an information literacy standards and skills document. It is part of the library PLC this year. As defined by the American Library Association, the American Association of School Librarians, and the Association for Educational Communications and Technology, information literacy is the set of skills needed to find, retrieve, analyze, and use information. Because of flexible scheduling, the librarian is available to teach lessons to fifth, eighth grade students on such topics as defining information needs, developing search strategies, locating and selecting information sources such as print materials, websites, search engines, databases, audio, audiovisual materials. Lessons also include critically evaluating resources, organizing information and taking notes, in particular, the Cornell Notes method that we mentioned before, properly citing sources and preparing bibliographies, and synthesizing information into new understandings. In particular, there have been a number of collaborative research projects so far this year. In fifth grade, I've worked with Laura Briggs on a Native American research, research project. We worked every day with her social studies classes for about two weeks. In so doing, we were able to provide mini lessons that focused on particular skills and then gave students time to work on those skills and give them direct feedback and support on those skills, as opposed to just front-loading them with a lot of information and setting them free to research. That project was very successful. The DuPont Science Project that the student representatives mentioned has also been a collaborative project between the library and the eighth grade science teachers with the same model, several weeks of classes with a number of mini lessons, a lot of opportunities to focus on specific skills and practice them and have access to the library and to get the support they need. I think that's the last thing on my list. Through the programs listed above, the library is actively involved in promoting literacy at the middle school. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I, yeah, go ahead, I have one after you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's a lot of information, and I have a very simple question.
Yes.
How much time are middle school students scheduled to be in the library on a weekly basis?
That's pretty much my question.
Okay. Students do not have a set library class schedule. They come to the library whenever they have the free time, whenever their teacher allows them to come down. They do come to the library to work on assignments, to study, to do research. They have laptop access, internet access in the library. So some students are in the library every day, quite a bit. But as far as classes go, it's up to the teacher to schedule times for the students to come down.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's really, depends on the class and the content.
Do you have any idea how many books students are taking out of the library?
That's a good question. I haven't checked the statistics lately, but I would say that we have over 100 transactions a day, so, and I'm not sure if that's a smaller number of students getting a lot of books or 100 kids each getting a book, but there are at least 100, I think. And I'm, I think the number has actually been increasing lately.
Okay.
Yeah, which is good. Yeah.
That was basically my question.
Okay.
Another question? All right, go ahead, I'll find the last.
I, I do have another question.
Okay.
And forgive me, I just don't understand the, the whole system, so.
Okay.
I'm seeing elementary. Sorry for the reference. The interlibrary loan system that you mentioned, sounds fantastic. Is there any opportunity for an interlibrary loan with the Thomas Memorial Library?
Good question. That question comes up a lot. Because we use different automation systems, we aren't able to loan items through, from the Thomas Memorals directly to our students. They have a different checkout policy, they have a different duration of, of the loan period, they assess fines if you're late. So it doesn't entirely work. However, if I can't find a book in our library and I can't find it in one of the school libraries, the next website I open is the Minerva Catalog, the Thomas Memorial Catalog. I send a lot of kids that way. Yeah, I very much encourage them to go up there because they have a wonderful statewide interlibrary loan program. Yeah.
So do we allow students to come to the library during free time, like after lunch? They can just drop in?
Absolutely.
During recess or during study halls?
I like to say that.
They have a teacher's note, or can they just make that choice?
I think the best way to describe it is anytime that their teacher says it's okay.
Okay.
I, I think most teachers would probably say they don't have a lot of free time. But during lunch and recess, certainly at, at the beginning of lunchtime, the end of lunchtime, the beginning and end of recess, we see a lot of students on their way to.
But upper grades have study halls every afternoon, right?
Study hall is, is also a very, typically a very busy time in the library. We have a volunteer that comes in and helps at that time to, to help cover a circulation desk. They are allowed to access, sometimes they have passes simply because they're traveling from, let's say if they're in world language on the very top floor, and they have to travel a long way to get to the library, they'll come with a pass just so that if anyone asks where they're going along the way, they, they have proof where they're going and where they've been.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not restricted in any way. The library is hardly ever, I won't say never, but hardly ever, ever closed during the school day. Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
And does it still use for a place when kids find the cafeteria too loud to be able to eat a quiet lunch? Is that used at all?
I haven't.
A question from guidance counselors or?
Yeah, I, there, there have been instances where students, as an alternative to recess, will come to the library every day. The guidance program does have a lunch program, as far as I, as I understand. There are a lot of students that eat their lunch with the guidance teachers. Because of some of the library rules, we don't, we prefer not to have food in there.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's just that my daughter used to hide out there.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a great place for her to have lunch.
Right, right.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, they're welcome anytime.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Nothing? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that right? So, I'll just close by saying our literacy is on the move. It's continuing to grow. Change of all. Any questions? Closing thoughts?
Thank you very much, Steve, for putting this together, and to all the teachers who, who gave their time tonight and came out, I appreciate your time and all of your efforts. And, you know, it's exciting for us to hear about how the literacy goal is expanding in the middle school, and it's, it was very exciting to hear from five to, to eight how it was, how it's expanding and being integrated. And I know from having a middle schooler, it's very exciting work, and I've watched it explode in my years in the middle school, so thanks for your work and all of your efforts. It's very exciting, and your enthusiasm.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. I'd like to, Meredith just pointed out that we have Jason in the background for item 7B, which is consideration to approve the high school canyoneering trip to the Grand Staircase Escalante National Monument, Utah, April 14th through 21st, 2012.
I just wanted to very briefly introduce Jason Bree Miller, who's a first-year teacher at Cape Elizabeth High School. Jason came to us from, he's worked in a couple of different private school environments in Connecticut, some well-known schools there. He also happens to be our girls' hockey coach and is doing a great job in, in that way. He's a, he's a wonderful English teacher who's engaging and challenging at the same time, and he has a particular passion for the outdoors. So a few weeks ago, Jason came to me with a proposal for a trip, which I wholeheartedly endorse, and I'll turn it over to Jason to describe that a little more.
So I don't know if you've had a chance to see my proposal, but essentially, it's a week-long backpacking canyoneering trip in the Grand Staircase Escalante, south central Utah. Spectacular wilderness area. I've led a trip there for the, the last three years with the Hachka School where I used to teach, and it just, year in and year out, it's an extraordinarily transformative experience for, for the students who go there. It's a chance for them to encounter wilderness, to engage them in conversations about backcountry travel and some of the skills involved in that, some of the leadership techniques involved in that, and they just emerge with a, just an increased sense of confidence and inability to appreciate solitude and stillness. It's a, it's an extraordinary trip, so I just, I wanted to do something for break and thought that I'd throw it out there.
That's great. Thank you for being willing to do that.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion? And then we can ask questions. Motion?
Yes, of course. One moment, please. I move that we approve the Cape Elizabeth High School Escalante canyoneering trip to the Grand Staircase Escalante National Monument, Utah, April 14th through the 21st of this year.
Do I have a second? Kate? Okay. Discussion, questions? David?
I have a raft of questions, not to make a joke, but quite frankly, I found the proposal exciting and wonderful, but barely skeletal. I, I'm not clear as exactly what people are going to do, this sort of a general description and the risks, everything's in draft form. The release is legally insufficient. It doesn't, I guess I have a lot of problems with it. It looks like there's a fairly, again, not knowing what canyoneering, I can't pronounce it.
Canyon.
Canyon earring is, but it sounds fairly risky. It doesn't sound like this is a standard, well-recognized trip that's been tried and true over five or six years, is what we normally approve. It seems to me that it's more of a, something that you've come up with based on your experience and that it's, it says we show up on certain days, at certain places, and so forth, but not a real good description about what, except for the rest, about what's to be done, and what are the risks inherent in something like this. And I, I'm, I, I have serious reservations about approving this type of a trip. It's not a well-recognized trip, that does not have a legally sufficient release, that doesn't, these people that are going on are not, do not have expertise. I'm not sure that the two leaders have the required expertise, because I don't know what the required expertise is for something like this. And it's not a, I guess that I have a lot of concerns about this. This is an extremely risky, unusual thing we're being asked to approve. It isn't a standardized, well-recognized trip that's been done eight times, and so we know what the risks are, and the guides are all, you know, there's legally recognized standards for who the guides are going to be. It's too vague and too risky.
My understanding, so when I talked to Jeff, I just quickly put together some materials that I had that I wanted to get in your hands, and my understanding was that this was the opportunity to field those questions and to give you a clearer sense of, of what we do and how we do it, so, yeah.
Sasha?
I just wanted to make a quick comment that Mr. Bree Miller actually showed me the photos from the trip that he took with his students from the previous school, and it looks like a really interesting, interesting and exciting trip that normally students from Cape wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to do. And I think that it's really an invaluable experience. Mr. Bree Miller is also a Knowles instructor, so he has, in my opinion, is more than qualified. But it really would just be a, a great way to spend your break and to sort of get outside of your box, which is, I think, a really productive thing for students in our school.
So, just to respond to the liability pieces and the release, what was included in the packet was some draft paperwork that Mr. Bree Miller had. Pauline and I have spoken, and Jeff and I have spoken about our liability coverage in terms of our insurance carrier, what requirements they look for, and we have a stand, a standard release that would be utilized that would be specific to the particular trip, but that would satisfy legal requirements. So that's not what you see. What you see is.
No.
Here's, I understand that. But what you saw was, here's the proposal, and I think, you know, there's a first time for every trip. Costa Rica didn't happen for eight consecutive years, the first time it was approved, and I, I, I think there's nothing lost in raising the question and trying to provide an opportunity for kids.
I, I'm not dis, may I speak? Chairperson? I do not disagree that this wouldn't be a fun trip. I wouldn't mind doing it. I think our job is to evaluate the merits, the risks, and what we're sending our children off to, and I don't see enough information here for me to make any kind of reasoned judgment. Not even close. If this was an established trip that's been done by some organization, I don't, I can't even think of a good camping organization, but someone that's done this sort of trip eight times before, and it had an established track record and so forth, that's one thing. Then it's much easier to approve it. This, with all due respect, look, was put together by somebody who does these things or knows something about it, but I'm being asked to approve something that, for example, one of the risks are that you could be days without medical care. Where's the helicopter coverage? There's a lot of stuff here without, and they have a phone. Is that what's usually, you know, a satellite phone? Is that what's done on these sorts of trips? I have no idea what the legals, forget legal. What is an appropriate trip, industry-wide recognized trip for this type of thing, and does this thing meet it?
Okay. John, did you have a question as well?
Well, I was going to just try to formulate a question out of, out of some of your concerns, and start by asking you, Jason, if you could just tell us a little bit about your, your trip leadership experience. It sounds like.
Sure.
You've been a Knowles instructor, you're a wilderness first responder.
Yeah, so I, I directed the outdoor programs at the TAF School in Watertown, Connecticut, and at the Hachka School in Lakeville, Connecticut. So I was responsible for designing and leading a variety of local and international backcountry experiences. So I had a group of 20 students in Tanzania climbing Mount Kilimanjaro. We put together an Aconcagua climb in Argentina. We did multiple night overnights in New Hampshire and Adirondacks. And I was responsible for putting together risk management protocols and making sure my, my trips were staffed by qualified instructors, so I've, I don't know how many field hours I have, but I have numerous field hours. This trip does take place in an extremely remote area. We, we do carry a satellite phone. Both instructors are wilderness first responders through WMI in Solo, which are the industry standards in backcountry medicine. Any, any other, I mean, I can continue to describe trips, but this particular trip.
Did you summit Aconcagua?
I could, I'm a type one diabetic, so I ended up not, my diabetes.
Did your students summit Aconcagua?
Instructors, that was, that was, that was a teacher trip.
That was a teacher trip.
Yeah.
That's, that's the highest mountain outside of the Himalayas in the world.
Gee, I don't, I know that. I've heard of it.
Yeah. So certainly, this trip takes place in a, in a, in a remote area. My judgment personally is really conservative. I don't, you know, while you're in a remote setting, you can't keep track of every single objective hazard, lightning, something like that. But my own risk management stance is extremely conservative. Yeah.
Thank you. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm glad that you added about. I'm glad that you added about how many trips you've organized, and, but you have to understand, I don't know what is an industry standard for how many people you're supposed to have. What's the level of training? Do you have to file certain, like, your maps about where you're going to be at certain points in time? You know that with an established trip.
Sure.
You know, you sign up for it at the Grand Canyon or wherever. And you're designing this, and it may meet all the industry standards, but I can't tell that.
No, I appreciate that. I can assure you that we abide by industry standards, but I don't know what else I can, I can say other than that. I mean, I appreciate your concern, absolutely. Yeah.
Can I speak for a second, Mary?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, just from a historical perspective. And David, it won't be the first or probably the last time that I ever respectfully disagreed with some of your sense, but I also appreciate what your concerns are, and I think they're legitimate concerns.
I worry when you don't respectfully disagree with me, but that's all right.
I think there, I think there is far more specificity that's been provided about, at this stage of this requested trip approval process than has ever before been presented for any trip that I've ever stood before the board and endorsed. It's far more detailed than the French exchange trip that happens, or the Costa Rican trip, or any of the trips where we send kids out to England or Italy or anything else. I mean, the board has never had this level of detail. However, I would say this, that it seems to me the precedent is established in the past, and this is what I would ask the board to consider. This is a trip that's proposed for April. It's not proposed for February. In the past, people who have had ideas to the, before the board about trips have gone through a two-step approval process. The first step is sufficient permission to allow Jason to advertise this to kids, to ask students if there's an interest, to ask parents if there's an interest, and time, then, to do some of the tweaking to make everybody feel extremely comfortable with this trip. Now, what I haven't talked to Jason about before I said that is when we have to do reservations for airlines and things like that. So, I'd have to figure that out, but if we could work that out, then I think that we would be delighted to do that. But I would submit that, that, that the board has more than enough information at this point to provide at least that tentative level of approval for the trip.
Could I respond?
Yes, you may.
Respectfully, Jeff, I do not think a comparison to Paris or Costa Rica is the same as a wilderness trip where they're days away from any kind of medical assistance. So, I think that the fact that we may have approved those sorts of things is completely different than what is a, looks like an exciting, but highly risky and very different in its risks than going to Paris or Costa Rica. But I do like the idea of, I like the concept, but, and I'm more than willing to consider if I could get an explanation of this with a comparison to industry standards. We know that this trip fits within the norms of what is considered a safe, reasonable trip for students to go on, like a comparison of this to some standard trip that's done in some, I don't know, Yosemite Glacier or something like that. That would be a lot, very helpful to me. And that would enable me to make the assessment that I'll do my duty to approve something that I think is not only a good experience for kids, but also a reasonably safe experience for kids. What I have right now, I don't mind, we, and I could even, I'd be even happy to rephrase the motion, so it's to provide a tentative approval of moving forward with this project, subject to getting sufficient detail about the description of the trip and the risks involved and the safety precautions being taken. That's fine with me.
Joe's got a question.
Thank you. Jason, I think this is an incredible trip, and I'm wondering if, you know, you need extra chaperones. I think you might have some volunteers here on the board. I do have some familiarly with family members taking wilderness trips with woofer-trained and Knowles-trained guides, and I do understand that when you, and I trust you when you say that you do follow industry standards, you would have a lot of face to lose if you didn't say that to us in a public forum. I think that some of David's concerns, maybe alleviated, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for Dave, but I know from a parent point of view, some of the further information that might help the community and some other parents in the community, if you were to put in some information around the miles hiked per day, elevation gains per day of hiking, so that you get a rough estimate or an idea of the physical agility that would be required of the students to attend the trip, and then what type of either physical preparation or training, or mental preparation or training for those students who do decide to go, so that, like I said, from my experience and knowing what these types of trips are really reliant their safety on, not only the training and the experience of their guides, but the mix of students that you bring with you, so that you don't get caught in three days into a wilderness trip and realize that one of your kids can't hike anymore because of something.
Right.
So, maybe some of those further details, I'm fleshing that out.
Yep. Makes sense.
Maybe for a future school board meeting, in terms of what is the school board's responsibility or policy on approving field trip permission forms. I feel, you know, I'm not, I, obviously, there's a parental consent, so I'm not going to put my, you know, parents will decide for their own children. So, as a school board, are we just saying, what are the educational merits? Or we just have to prove it because there's a fundraising component, you know, before I ask for more information? You know, I don't know if that's something even the school board's duty to do that. So, maybe some clarification, so for every trip that comes forward, we're not going to, you know, are we going to require more information than that's warranted? So, that, I don't know the policy, so maybe that would help enlighten, enlighten me on, you know, what types of questions we should be asking. But obviously, with any trip, you're going to have, parents are going to decide for their children, so I, I would like to see that information, but obviously, you're going to, you know, the parents will decide for their own children, and I don't know if, you know, how much we need to go into all the details, but.
So, I think, Meredith, will you find that, would you mind finding that policy?
I've already written it down. Be happy to provide it for you.
Thank you. And maybe we can reference it on our own in the next couple of days even, and take a look and see what our responsibilities really are in terms of approving these trips and suspect-
I can just tell you that when it's a school-sponsored trip, which is what this seems to be, that we do have liability and responsibility. It's not absolved by a parent signing off, flatly. If this was not affiliated with the school and just being done, fine, but it is. Therefore, we do have liability and responsibility to make sure it's done properly. And I think you can do it. I mean, I'd make it even simpler. If you, if you had some sort of a, you know, three-page, I'm making this up, but like a three-page list of what a classic wilderness immersion course is and how, okay, we match up to the industry standards because we have two people per 20, they have the following training, we're going to do more than X miles per day, we have, you're only required to have a, you know, if you match it up or something like that, that gives me then something that I can, I can compare an apple to an apple.
Sure.
I can barely walk across the street, never mind three days into the wilderness, so. I'm just saying, it's not inherent in me to have the knowledge to approve something, whereas a trip to Paris, I think I could probably figure that one out. So, if you can do that, I'd be more than happy to, when I saw that kind of information, if I thought it was an appropriate thing, to support it.
Okay. Joe, did you have another comment?
Oh, no.
Question?
Nothing.
Okay.
I have answered.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay, so what to do with this motion? I suspect we should withdraw it.
I think I would simply remove it from the table, correct?
Well, I would be willing to rephrase it along what Jeff suggested to, I mean, I don't want to discourage this. I mean, I think it's a great thing. I think if we change, I'd be willing to rephrase the motion to say that we, that we, I move that we approve the trip in concept, subject to appropriate detail being provided, or approve, a trip, I guess, subject to appropriate detail being provided on, if that's what you want, or if you feel comfortable moving forward.
So, we have to amend the motion?
The motion to abort and see where we come out. You know, I'm not, I think maybe the word canyoning is, sounds more intimidating than it is. And this, as I look at the itinerary, and there's not a lot, as much detail as you would have liked to see in the itinerary, but this could be described as a hiking trip that's taking place inside of canyons. Canyon earring can mean a lot of things, the way the term mountaineering can mean a lot of things.
Right.
And I think that the risks described, that's an honest description of the potential risks. It would be an honest description of the potential risks of a lot of activities in the outdoors that we're more familiar with here in Cape Elizabeth.
Well, we have an outdoor club that has taken overnight camping trips, correct?
And they would have the same, the industry standard would be that they would have the exact same risk forms.
And the same risks, and the same.
Has the same liability. We've gone through all the motions of this, and it's been an issue, but it's always been resolved if we've been able to afford it, so.
Do you have a question? Jason, have you, you've done this particular trip before?
This particular trip and this particular route before.
How many times?
This will be the fourth, this would be the fourth time.
Thank you very much.
So, I move to approve the Capless of High School Escalante Canyon Earring Trip to the Grand Staircase Escalante National Monument, Utah, April 14th, 21st to 2012.
The motion in the second has already been made, so let's call a vote then, or if we think we should. So, all those in favor?
Want to ask how many opposed?
All those opposed. Thank you, David.
May I just point out that for future reference, it's policy IHOA, student travel and field trips.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, so we'll back up, and I would, we'll back up to D at this point, which is the proposed budget schedule. We don't really have anything to do, other than I would ask board members and our student representatives to look at this schedule and let me know, let me or Meredith know if you have conflicts, you know, sooner rather than later. The schedule will give room for one, two, three, really, three and a half meetings on the budget prior to the vote. If we need an extra one, it's scheduled. It looks like it is every Tuesday from February 28th until March 27th, we will have a meeting. So, don't book your Tuesdays. We've got your Tuesdays for March, and then we'll take that last Thursday if needed. So, again, I would just ask board members and, because you will be expected to be at these meetings, if at all possible, and our student reps to take a look at that schedule, and if you have issues, let me or let Meredith know. Are there issues?
Yes, there's one issue.
I have S H P.
Oh, okay. So, there may be issues where, in the past, where our student representatives have been unable to make it to every meeting, and we certainly understand your schedules are quite complicated and busy, so. Meredith?
Just one other piece that we'd like some guidance from the board around, which is whether or not you want those workshop sessions videotaped. My understanding from Pauline is that last year was the first year that that had occurred? Not the first year, okay. It costs roughly $125 for a typical two-hour workshop session, and that isn't money that's been carried in the budget in the past. It's not in the budget currently, but we'd, but we'd like your guidance. We'll figure out how to accomplish that, but if that's something we want to do, we certainly can budget for that moving forward.
Do we, Meredith, do we have any idea of how, how many times those taped budget sessions were viewed from the web? I assume they're available only online through the website, so.
That is accurate, but I don't know how many times, so I can try to find that out for you. Gary, there should be a way to ascertain.
That might be an interesting statistic to have. Nobody watched it. It would make our decision easier. Maybe somebody did.
I'm certain.
I did. I may be the little pure.
I know. So, you knew what you were getting yourself into.
I will find that out.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Mary, we have to give our objections now, or do we have a chance to compare this to?
You know what? If you could let, you can, if you have an objection right now, that-
Well, the only question I have is, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Is any of these during the, the school breaks?
No.
Okay, then I don't have any problems.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
I will keep this as brief as possible. First of all, I will say that you should see draft school calendars out by the end of the week. We prepared two drafts. The first is fairly similar to what you've seen for the current school year. The second is a draft that we want to put out for, certainly for conversation. I'm sure we'll receive feedback. But in lieu of both a February and April vacation, it has a week and a half break scheduled in the month of March, and really, that conversation stemmed from teachers saying we'd like more continuity with students. So, it really gives a long run of educational instructional time from January through mid-March and from late March through the end of the school year. So, again, you'll see both of those posted. I will make sure they're sent to you as a school board, but you'll also see them posted on the school district website, and we invite comments and questions and feedback.
And the public will be invited as well?
Absolutely. And I'm sure they'll contact their school board representatives as well as, as school administrators. Several of us attended a session sponsored by the Department of Education about the main data warehouse system. That will be coming online later this month. So, once that's up and running, it's a great way for us to be able to compare lots of pieces of information collected for our school district with that of information collected for school districts across the state. So, not only assessment scores, but staffing ratios, budget comparison figures, and whereas right now, we have to make phone calls or scan other districts' websites to try to pull that information together, this will allow us to run a report, for example, on, you know, comparing our district to several other districts. So, it's a plus. It's Department of Education money. They're to your tax dollars at work, so we hope it will be a useful resource. The next coffee chat is scheduled for next Saturday, January 21st, from 9:00 to 10:00 at the Community Room in the Community Services Building. So, I look forward to seeing any people who are able to attend. No set agenda, just opportunity for discussion about educational items of interest. The vision and mission work continues. We began December 19th with a K-12 faculty discussion. We met after school on a Monday, and thank you, staff, for your flexibility on the start and end times for that day. Mr. Connelly and Mr. Shedd are working to organize opportunities for me to meet with students later on this month, and the posting for the two public sessions, community sessions, will go out hopefully tomorrow, and those are scheduled for January 26th at 7:00 PM or January 28th at 10:00 AM. So, you choose one, preferably, but we understand that it's hard sometimes for both parents to get out, or both members of a household to come out in an evening, and that not everyone is available evening. So, we've tried to give a couple of options, but an opportunity to come together and talk about the future of the school district here in Cape Elizabeth. And the board will take up that information and try to refine some of those statements, hopefully, and it's planned. Still in the planning stages, retreat scheduled for February 3rd. So, again, our target date is to try to bring a revised vision and mission statement back to the board for the March meeting. We'll see how that goes. It's not, it's not a simple process, but as we move forward through the input sessions, we'll be bringing groups of people together, and I've had several volunteers step forward. Those volunteers will have the opportunity to come together and do some of the work of refining the statements. Budget work has begun. I guess it never stops, but- I guess it never stops, but Pauline and I and our school staff and administrators have already begun budget conversations, so we are out in advance of your work, and we look forward to those conversations as they arise. I think I'll stop there.
Okay. Meredith, did you mention where those community meetings will be held?
They will be held at the Pond Cove Middle School Cafeteria.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Meredith, for all of that. I look forward to seeing those calendars. I would encourage board members, if you're interested in hearing public comment around mission and vision, to try and attend at least one of those community meetings. I think it will be an interesting opportunity to hear what our community thinks about where our school should be and what it values, and I'll look forward to attending at least one of those. Okay, so let's move on to item number 7A, consideration to approve the high school World Affairs Council trip to Boston University Model UN, February 24th through 26th. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the World Affairs Council trip to Boston University on February 24th through 26th, 2012.
Okay, great. Second? Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Questions? No? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Our last item, consideration to explore the viability of iPad use by the school board. This was something that David Hillman brought up last, in our last meeting, and asked that this be added to our agenda. So David, I'll let you speak to that.
I'm going to make a different motion than what's articulated on our agenda. I move that we continue the issue as to whether or not we are going to decide to explore the viability of iPad use by the school board until an asset inhabits schedule for consideration by the school board after, reasonably after the budget process is complete. That's my motion.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
A second?
Okay, any discussion?
I'm not sure what we're, the motion is. The motion is to maybe explore at a later date the viability of iPad use by school board?
No. The motion said that we will schedule the decision as to whether or not we're going to explore, I mean, yes, you're right, it's inarticulately formed, but the motion is to schedule for a school board meeting at some point after the budget process is complete to decide at that time whether or not we are going to establish a task force to explore the viability of iPads.
Okay. Michael, is that, does that answer your question?
What's the point of the motion?
Yeah, why don't we just move this to a future date?
Should we table it for now? Is that...
I thought I just moved it to a future date, to after the budget process. If we table it, that means it may not ever come up again, and then I have to go again at another meeting and raise it.
Okay. I understand. So the point of the motion is to put the issue on the schedule.
I'm...
Post.
After the budget process.
Correct. I'll repeat my motion. I move that it be, I mean, how often do I have to do this? It's pretty clear to me.
At least three.
Until you have four voters who understand what you're saying.
I think you've got at least three now.
No, I only have four who understand.
One more time. Meredith, do you want to take that?
I can try to read back what I wrote down, which is to move the decision to explore the viability of iPad use for the school board for after the completion of the budget process.
Is that your motion?
No. I move that we, that we, let's put it this way, why don't we, this is silly. I move that we table the consideration of the, determining whether or not we want to use iPads. I move we table it.
Okay.
I do.
Okay. Discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right, thank you. Moving on to item eight, committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? No?
I would just say that while we're on the subject of iPads, that the policy committee is working on revisions on the computer and internet services use policies with the goal of getting those policies in front of the board by the next meeting, so that they are approved and in place in advance of the distribution of iPads to high school students.
Okay.
So you can expect that in your packets next time.
Next time. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? No? All right. School board agenda requests. None? Announcements of upcoming meetings. John, do you want to talk about when policy meetings will be?
Yes, the policy committee met on, with very short notice. I apologize to everyone involved, whether they were there or not, yesterday, and we will meet on the Monday preceding the school board business meeting every month until the end of the school year.
Okay, great.
And we meet in the Jordan Conference Room at 7:30 AM, Monday morning.
Okay.
It's a great way to start your week.
Policy.
Yes.
Negotiations are scheduled to meet Thursday at 3:00.
Okay. And we will meet with our legislators, is that correct, David, on Friday?
Yes.
Okay, Friday morning. In the Jordan Conference Room at 9:00. We'll also have a meeting, we will have our workshop on the 24th of January, our finance workshop, correct? And can you remind us again what our topics will be, Michael?
Sure. The workshop will be January 24th at the high school library. I think on the calendar it has a 6:30 start time. The agenda items will be district demographics, district staffing methodology, overview of instructional support, and any update on any program changes.
Okay, great. The last, our last workshop, we actually began with the workshop and not the finance meeting. Is that something the board is interested in doing again? That allows our administrators to come to workshop and then leave a little earlier?
I think that's great.
Okay. So we'll hold the, we'll hold the workshop first, just so administrators know, workshop will begin at 6:30, and then we'll do our finance meeting after the workshop, so you can all go home. So thank you, everybody. I think that's all for announcements for upcoming meetings. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Anyone? Or do you all want to stay?
Some would.
All right, second? All right, all those in favor?
Seven.
All right, seven now. Every time. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Meredith.
Thanks, Joe.
I know, I know. They found it.
I know how that works.
I can remember them.
I can remember them.
Bring them home.